Good evening. Today is Monday, February 3rd, 2020. This is a regular, nope, this is a special meet, nope.
Workshop.
It's the Board of Education Workshop. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. You can see we have a small group today. Teres is out of town as she had told us, and unfortunately Cynthia had a family emergency that she had to attend to. We do tonight have a presentation from Ms. Amy Goodman is going to present on our strategic plan, and then the board is just going to talk a little bit while we're here. We're going to go over our board goals and the progress that we have made and our priorities from now till the end of the year. So would you like to start, Ms. Goodman?
Sure. Okay. A district's strategic plan ensures that our greatest student gains would be accomplished with focus and persistence by aligning curriculum, instruction, assessment, and resources to the plan. This graphic illustrates the strategic planning process that most districts use. In the summer of 2018, the district embarked on a process to set goals for school years 2019 to 2022. Data was collected from all school community stakeholders through forums and interviews with faculty, board members, parents, community members, and students, as well as an electronic survey for all faculty, parents, support staff, and community members without children, and an analysis of data from standardized tests. A representative groups of teachers, parents, board members, and community members met for two days in January of 2019 to review all data with a consultant that was picked by the school district. They interpreted the results and determined four target areas: social and emotional learning, contemporary teaching and learning, instruction to meet the diverse needs of diverse learners, and a systemic approach to professional learning. Next, an action planning team was formed consisting of faculty and administration to delineate the most powerful action steps to propel the district forward within those four pillars. The first one we're going to talk about tonight is social and emotional learning. And as you can see, the goal is to access learning and understanding. All members of our school community will learn and demonstrate self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and positive relational skills for optimal mental, social, and emotional well-being. This is the first pillar, and it's within the area of social and emotional development. This slide shows CASL, which is the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. And most school districts are now using this in their social and emotional learning curriculum. It's a trusted source of that high-quality, evidence-based, social and emotional learning curriculum and structures. CASL supports educators and policy leaders and enhances the experience and outcomes of students pre-K through 12. These are the five areas that we focus on in the social and emotional learning curriculum. Oh, sorry. Hold on a second. These should be popping up. Hmm. This is, give me a second. There you go. Okay, so the first area, and you can see what is the sub-area of each of these and why they are so important for students to learn. These have an impact on how we understand ourselves, how we work well with others, and how we make good decisions. These are the social and emotional learning skills that our students need to learn not only to be successful in school, but to be successful in life. I have to get used to this computer. Okay. What does social and emotional learning look like in a school, a classroom, and a community? Systemic SEL is promoted across multiple contexts every day. It's about how teaching and learning happens as well as what you teach. This framework identifies those five competencies, and when prioritized across school district settings, schools and classrooms, school-wide practices and policies, and then to families and communities, we can effectively navigate the world more effectively for our students. Our school district chose a program called Ruler, which is an evidence-based program supported by CASL. It was developed at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Ruler teaches the skills for emotional intelligence, those associated with recognizing, understanding, labeling, reassessing, and regulating emotion. Decades of research shows that these skills are essential to effective teaching and learning, sound decision-making, physical and mental health, and success in school beyond. Recognizing, understanding, labeling, and expressing and regulating emotion. Those are the skills. These were the action items that our committee came up with, the groups that were formed on the school level. There's a team on the school level that came up with these for social and emotional learning. Share the rationale for the need for this work with all staff. Identify building-level SEL teams and integrate work with the role of the new school counselor. Determine district participation in the Ruler approach. Select a district-wide shared reading text and a learning journey for families and staff with an evening with an SEL leader. These are the things that have been done so far, and I want to thank the principals. As you'll see throughout this process, I've gotten input from the principals about what they are doing in terms of each of these four pillars. So in Cottle, the SEL team began the process of being trained by the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence on the Ruler method last school year and followed through into this current school year. Assistant Principal Pete Calgalan is the SEL team leader in that school. And as they've been trained, this Wednesday will be the first turnkey training for the staff at Cottle. And the planned rollout for all students will be during the 2021 school year. Another part of one of our plans is to integrate our new school counselor, and Ms. Shakira McKinley has made a positive impact on our students and faculty as a new counselor at Cottle School. She does pull in, she pushes into classrooms and does student development on social skills as well as pull out kids for some groups. She's available for counseling as needed. In addition, we also have a district-wide SRO who has made a tremendous impact on all of our Cottle community and is a positive role model for our Cottle Cubs, as well as working with our guidance counselor and our STEAM teacher to conduct lessons on digital citizenship. And she works with the administration daily. There's a program at Cottle called the Orange Bandana Award, which is really an upstander award for students who not only show act of kindness, but also stick up for students who may be made not to feel well by another student, and they have their names published in the Cottle Weekly, as well as earn an orange bandana to build a positive school culture. Tucker Ho Middle School, again, very similar. They also have an SEL team led by Assistant Principal Scott DeBellas, and the middle school team is also getting trained on the Ruler program with the same rollout on Wednesday, and that will continue through the spring. Within the school, SEL moments during formal and informal observations are always pointed out. There have been parent book talks this fall on SEL foundations, SEL social-emotional learning, and diversity clubs runs amazing events such as Kindness Day and Mix It Up Day. At Tucker Ho High School, two updates on the staff's SEL training provided already in faculty meetings. The high school counselors have meetings with parents and students to help them adjust to the high school. Already integrating the relationship of SEL, social-emotional learning into the curriculum content, and Mr. DeBellas will be spearhousing staff training on Wednesday, February 5th, with the Tucker Ho High School and Tucker Ho Middle School representatives. There has been a GSA club forum that had a successful week sharing information on acceptance. The next pillar in the plan is diverse needs of learners. To meet the diverse needs of all learners and improve student outcomes, we will design equitable instruction and learning opportunities based on achievement data and student strengths, interests, and abilities. Educational equity means that each student has what they need regardless of race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, or disability abilities. It's defined as all students find their way to find joy in their own success and joy in their learning every day. Here are the learner's action plan. Evaluate and expand learning program opportunities to meet learners' diverse needs with a pre-K/K focus, summer bridges program, RTI enrichment. Evaluate all proposed course offerings through the lens of diverse learners. Provide intense interventions for pre-K to grade-two students who are not on grade level. And implement grades 2 to 5 STEAM program and provide clear articulation to 6th through 8th grade. Expand and enhance K-12 literacy learning and expand E&amp;L opportunities. This is what we're doing in our schools towards this. So at Cottle, there is a WIN program, which means what I need. It's a period that has been really a wonderful addition to Cottle. WIN provides an opportunity for students to focus on what they need based on targeted skills in the form of individual or small group instruction. The ability to customize this time to individual students' needs is an asset to the program. So kids who need enrichment can get that during that time, as well as kids who need support. Additionally, the newly implemented iReady program has been a great addition to Tier One intervention piece of response to intervention at Cottle. iReady assists supporting students in foundational skills while remaining in the classroom. Teachers and students utilize iReady as part of the WIN period for those students that need support. Even without access to the Innovation Lab currently under construction at Cottle, the 2nd to 5th grade STEAM program is going strong. Our new teacher, Ms. Kenneth Parrow, uses a program called Creative Learning System, and kids conduct hands-on, real-world, peer collaborative projects, as well as she works closely with teachers as her member of the team and as our technology coach. Grade 5 has also been departmentalized, which helps us also deal with diverse learners, and there's been tremendous positive feedback from the students, teachers, and parents. Finally, our K-2 teachers are thoroughly collaborating and researching on the Foundations program. A team of teachers will be conducting three-site visits to three separate elementary schools that are currently using Foundations. Foundations is an Orton-Gillingham-based program that will help all learners learn to read, and it's just going to be in addition to the reading program that we already have. We are planning to have our teachers participate in professional development through BOSIs in May and June, but that will be something we will discuss with you through the budget process. A good strategic plan is leading us in terms of where we put our financial resources. In Tucker Ho Middle School, the National Junior Honors Society induction now includes 7th and 8th graders. We have clarified the rubric and aligned bylaws with the national organization. We are also looking at algebra and providing the support that students need. This year, when students were struggling, we created an extra time for learning in algebra. Again, when we look at diverse needs of learners, we have to look at all learners, our advanced learners and our struggling learners, and sometimes our advanced learners struggle in courses, and we need to be ready for all of them. Teachers are updating courses and curriculum with diverse learners in mind, and we're observing and gathering data on STEAM programs in grades 6 to 8. At the high school, vocational education students now planning careers in courses such, in areas such as engineering, cosmetology, mechanics, fashion design, and commercial art. The internship for 2020 is initiated already, and I have to say, this is a great, great program at Tucker Ho High School. Orientation meetings were held, resumes to be developed, requirements and expectations reviewed. Also, at the high school, we had an alumni panel, which also provides students with feedback on how the first year of college is, and their experience actually has been very positive. They say Tucker Ho High School has really prepared them well. The writing volume has increased in all curricular areas, and we are still working on that, and that's something that we also might talk to you about during our budget time, and that's why this is a good time to look at our strategic plan. Staff support needs to keep on being upgraded. We need to make sure we have additional courses that help diverse learners and all learners. The third pillar is contemporary teaching and learning. To prepare students for future success, we will embed contemporary teaching and learning across disciplines for all faculty and students. Here is the action plan for this. Establish a K-12 innovation team with PTA support, establish both local and global connections for real-world problem-solving. Integrate STEAM, integrate K-12. Expand secondary course offerings and clubs to capture students' interests. Develop deeper connections between general and special education classes. Ensure teachers have methods to share best practices. And in partnership with all the PD and all the work that we do in and outside the building, analyze current curriculum through the lens of contemporary teaching and learning. This is what we're doing at the schools. Cottle again, and some of this overlaps so much, but the WIN program and the STEAM program and what we're doing in those classes with creative learning is, works in this realm too. We also have Curious on the Hudson at Cottle. It is a PTA-supported program, but it gives us STEAM enrichment to our students, and it offers innovative enrichment programs. Our K-2 teachers are thoroughly collaborating and researching on the Foundations program. We use extended-day faculty meetings and superintendent conference days as opportunities for instructional practice team meetings in grades 3 to 12, which have been extremely valuable in aligning vertically, that's grade-to-grade, and horizontally, which is across-grade levels, in the areas of math, ELA, social studies, and science. At Tucker Ho Middle School, the STEAM grant in grade 7 brings in more supplies, and they're starting to work more on STEAM curriculum. The art department is making connections to STEAM. And I would like to just take a minute to talk about some of the clubs at the middle school. There are so many. And the GO has expanded, giving kids more leadership opportunities. There's also a debate team, which is wonderful for our kids to learn how to make cohesive arguments, and many other clubs that we will be talking to you about when we do our presentation on the budget. Expanding opportunities for middle school algebra also works here. We are maximizing the two-hour staff development days and superintendent's days again for the 3 to 8, and also 6 through 12 coherence, and we're sharing envisioned samples with the math department to bridge stronger grade 5 and middle school curriculum. Tucker Ho High School, new courses this year are Introduction to Architecture and Digital Art and Design, Reviewing Conceptual Physics to Possibly Revise as an Application of Physics and Engineering Course. That's what we're doing now, thinking about what kids need in the future and looking at our course through the contemporary teaching and learning vision. Career software is also available in the high school, where students can explore not only their strengths, but jobs that they might be skilled for or interested in, so that when they go to college, they have an idea, or even when they're doing extracurriculars about what they want to learn. New clubs are enjoying a lot of success, but we will be coming to you during budget season to talk about some other clubs that we have in mind. Very exciting, Tiger Bites is available on Friday mornings. Tiger Bites is a life skills class that's just started, are operating a real-world coffee cafe. I have to really thank Mr. DiArco, because when I got here and I was director of special education, he had that idea, and they'd been trying to do it, and then I said, "Let's just do it," and he put that together. And I think that that's a program that, if anything is contemporary teaching and learning, that is. They are learning in the real world how to set up a real cafe. Student choice, class libraries, address student reading, where they can pick and choose according to their interests, and this is, again, connecting kids to contemporary teaching and learning to their interests, and also expanding their vocabulary through reading. The last area of our plan is professional learning. In support of the district's strategic goals, we will create a systemic approach to continuous professional learning that values instructional collaboration, creative data analysis, and K-12 curriculum consistency and alignment. Here are the areas of professional learning action items, and there are a lot, and there's a lot of work to do in this area. So data analysis, this really talks about how we organize our data, how we are going to analyze it, our strengths and gaps. Instructional collaboration, which I talked about already, is consistent in systemic grade-level collaboration, both vertically and horizontally, and that's also the alignment of the K-12 curriculum. What is the next-gen standards? What do we have in place to ensure that kids are achieving their goals based on all these changes in education? And increase foster and creative and innovation, both with our students and also with our teachers and staff. Research best models for STEAM programs for teachers and students. Launch and expand the innovative science lab. Study the climate and culture that fosters innovation in a school. So district-wide, we have been, again, as I said, reviewing the state results, as you see as we present to you on our data, and we also are looking at subgroups that we really need to focus on. Our district has made a significant commitment to vertical instructional practices in conversations, and teachers surveyed as to needs for professional learning. At Cottle, the New York State ELA test data was broken down and reviewed in detail by question-type standard to enhance learning as part of the ELA instructional practice team meeting. Interestingly, the special education model has been redesigned, which is, again, when you look at your data and you look at how you can do things better, we get information from that, we work with teachers, and we make changes. ELA science, social studies programs were evaluated and being piloted, new ones, and we're reviewing our STEAM data with our new program. At Tucker Ho Middle School, departments meant to discuss and align course questions and topics. Teachers use departmental time to update, review, and amend course syllabus, and teachers who are receiving new materials or new furniture share what they have learned at a faculty meeting. At Tucker Ho High School, each region's question category is reviewed. Also, we compare Tucker Ho High School performance versus the region, which was, came out very well, and communication of regions' revisions given next-gen standards are ongoing. Two Tucker Ho Middle School and High School meetings were held to coordinate content and strategies. There was also a big summer PD, professional development, with Jacob Burns for visual literacy. We will be increasing that, and that's something that we're starting to see in our classrooms. The student choice reading program, again, I mentioned that before, and continue with the writing revolution. New teachers were trained, and we continue to use the opportunities during extended day and conference day to share all of this. The English language learning teachers, the ESL teachers are doing a great job. They provide professional development to our staff on strategies they can utilize in the classroom, and there's also been advanced placement, professional development in chemistry, calculus, advanced chemistry, calculus, and Spanish. Now, I put this back up with some ideas of the future of the plan. It is important to note that this strategic plan is a living document, and as such, will change, adapt, and grow as time passes and new situations arise. Since our purpose is to educate children, our general overall goal is about children. This requires a great deal of thought and investment of resources and time. This strategic plan will help guide our thoughts on planning in the future and allocate our resources so we can meet the needs of our children and community in a fiscally responsive manner. When I looked at what we were doing, I feel that professionally, we need to drill down to the key priorities. We still need to research best practices and evidence-based programs. We need better-defined action plans as we go forward and establish benchmarks and timelines. And then additionally, with the program implementation, we need to, again, once we drill that down, we will have a better idea of the benchmarks and timelines. The plan is good, but in some ways, it's unwieldy, and it's a checkoff, and in some ways, it's very, it's got a lot of good in it, but we need to, again, drill it down and see what are our key priorities. I put this up here, this last thing, because there's such a great benefit in assessment, and I don't mean the New York State tests, that's just one piece, but we need to be sure that we establish shared definitions of school climate and what are our goals, and the common language for discussion, so that we make sure that everything we do is based on that. We need to recognize the school's strengths, which we have a lot, but let's pinpoint them and celebrate and leverage them. We need to identify the school's needs to allocate resources effectively, and we need to gain perspective and insight of the key stakeholders. We just did, very recently, we asked our community what they thought in 2018. We need to look at that. That was the summer of 2018. I'm not sure if everybody got to see that in the way that they should have. We need to establish benchmarks for improvement, and we need to deliver the message that growth is important and growth is good. It doesn't mean that we're doing anything wrong, it just means that we want to get better and better. And the other thing, I think, when we talk about assessment, we need to engage the teachers, the faculty, and community in productive conversations. Conversations need to be about the plan and the goal and about students. We can't take our eye off of that. A lot of people have different things to say, but this should be front and center in everything that we do. I bring this up here again because of board, and I want to thank them. This is a good plan, and the mission is so important, because every single student matters, and everything we do matters. And I want to thank all the people who were involved from the start with the strategic plan, the people who sit on these four different groups, and I want to thank the school administrators, because they gave me such great insight into this. I really appreciate that opportunity, because I personally learned so much, and I want to make sure that the board and the community knows the good work that we are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lauren, Alora, and Peach, did you have any questions? Do you need to add anything that we're discussing?
I guess I'll back down, maybe it'll be easier to...
Yeah, maybe we can have a discussion. Yeah. The plans that you showed us, can you just tell us a little bit how they were developed? In other words, who's working on these plans? Is it, each building has a committee or a team?
Right.
And who's made up, who makes up the team?
Okay, so I, the plan is interesting. The way that it was developed, it was a little different than maybe some other districts might do it, but there were administrators charged with each of these four areas, and they had a committee that was part, again, it was K-12, it was across K-12, and these action plans, and this is why I think that we can refine them, they weren't as specific as, let's say, if Cottle made their own action plans, or if the high school made its own action plan. It was sort of across, and they hit some of it really well, I think, but I think at this point, if we bring it, coherence is important, that vertical, but so is having the school understand the needs of the school grade by grade. So the horizontal is also important. So I think at this point, there's another way to look at it, but really, I have to thank the administrators. I also wanted to thank Dr. McDonald, because she had a lot to do with this also, and also giving me a lot of this information so that I understand it. But I, but again, I thank these administrators, because they put two assistant principals in charge of SEL, social-emotional learning, and that was K-12. Dr. Lenahan had a group, but they were all, Mr. Marash had a group, but it was all K-12. At this point, I think the next step, as we get through this year, is to...
At this point, I think the next step, as we get through this year, is to look at it and refine it.
Right.
So, it makes sense, but that's a good question.
So, look at it, refine it as it is at each level, basically.
Exactly.
Yeah. And you mentioned benchmarks, but obviously, we need to be able to measure.
Right.
That's what you mean by that, right?
Yes, yes.
Right.
And the timeline.
And the time.
Yeah.
I thought you did mention this, that it also requires a fiscal plan. And, you know, I thought it was really great to hear how last year's investments in our budget, we see them in this, in your plan, you know, the K-5 guidance counselor and the STEAM teacher, and that's all really exciting. And I guess my question would be, as we now are just starting our budget cycle for this, for next year, I would think that that list of priorities is really important right now because it's, there isn't a, it's not a specific timeline, you know, working together with the administration as to identifying what the priorities will be for this upcoming budget is what we're going to be discussing over the next couple of months.
And that's why I think that doing this tonight was good because I gives, and again, the investments the board made last year, really, I mean, a lot of its plan was really discussing that. So, I think that it was already in front of you and the people who made the recommendations, the administrators, but this year, we're going to look at it again. So, some of the things I said in there, like foundations, that will be part of the budget. We're hoping that the board will see that that is in the community, something very important for us. And also, the high school and middle school will look at courses through that, through a different lens that lends itself to what kids need, diverse learners or contemporary teaching and learning, and we will present that. And we'll have some decisions to make, but we are thinking along this. You're absolutely right.
And I think, you know, it's also important because, you know, as the board, we, when we talk about the budget and we make the investment and we get the community's support on our budget, that's almost the easy part, you know? Because what we really want to know is, we want to know how effective and what, you know, the benefits to our students are. Just as a board, you know, we have heard, you know, wonderful input about the K-5 guidance counselor and about the new STEAM teacher at Cottle, and it would be great to present some of that to the community so they could see, you know, what's being done, the kind of work that's being done there. Because I think the community would like to see, you know, it's, to say we, you know, kind of like we checked it off and we supported it, I don't think is really enough. You know, we really need to show the benefit to our students and the value because it's really about value, right? So, I think, you know, if we could see that in the upcoming months and we can show that, especially when we're planning our budget, I think it's always great to be able to share that with our community.
You're absolutely right. And when we met with the administrative team, that's exactly what they said. So, this is sort of the background, the start. Now, we'll show you what that looks like. And I like when...
So, that next level that you're talking about, maybe you have, this is too premature. I don't know if you've thought through this, but like, what will be the way in which you do that next level? So, now you break up the teams into each level, middle school, high school, elementary school, and have teams work on implementing that, this type of strategy, these thoughts into each school?
Well, now we are, as you can see, in the building level process. We're not going to take, you know, these teams are on, I think, next year or over the summer, actually, would be a better time to refine it and really, you know, from the work we did this year, prioritize and make goals out of it. I can already think of some. I mean, they're not, it's not so different from what we're, what we're doing, but it would really be much more measurable and prioritized, and we'd see the coherence in a different way in the building. So, I think that that's what we have to do next, again, have it to the building and what are we expecting? And what do we want to see with social emotional learning? Do we want to see, we have to look at our data. Do we have a lot of DASA complaints? Do we have, you know? How do we measure it? Or do we measure it just by, you know, it could be surveys, but there has to be something that is, that we can, that we can see. And also, we have to make sure we give the teachers, the staff development, and the tools that they need because everybody's looking at contemporary teaching and learning. Every, you know, we want to get, I believe this district can be ahead of everybody. I mean, we have a very good staff. We have some really great programs here. We just need to give the support to our staff and also great kids.
So, that's the area I wanted to speak about a little more. It's kind of what I was getting at. Everything that I saw up there looks fantastic to me. There's nothing there that I saw that didn't, that didn't look good. But in the area of contemporary learning, that's an area where I really want to challenge the folks who are going to work on that to be bold and to kind of really, I mean, that's the one that stands out for me, is the one that's become kind of like a, something I'm really interested in. And I'm not an educator, I know that, but I really believe that there, a lot has to change in how education is delivered, particularly in the upper levels, the middle school, high school, high school mostly. And I think this is an opportunity to really think outside the box and not just dance around contemporary learning, but really sort of embrace it. Now, I want that to be, obviously, a team, a team discussion, but I, as an individual board member, would really encourage you to really, really be bold about that. I mentioned to the board before the holidays, I read a book called Prepared by Diane Taverner. I don't know if you guys have read that book, but it's an excellent book. I recommend anybody there to read that book. And Diane Taverner, the author is, runs the Summit School System out of California, which is kind of like the model of contemporary learning now. She's been doing it since 2002, and it's a high, it's a high school system. And the whole concept of it is, and it's really kind of bold, is that curriculum is not how, the content is not how the curriculum's made. Skills are how the curriculum's made, and then the content is brought in after the fact. Right now, what we do now, traditional learning is, it's all built around the content, and then we add in like clubs and projects and things to kind of augment it. This is the complete opposite. This is building, teaching around the skills, life skills, and then bringing the content into that. And the odd thing is that, what she talks about is that even though the content isn't a focus, the content gets absorbed better than does the normal way around. I'm a big believer in that. I'm not an educator, but I've been a student for a very, very long time. We've all sat in classrooms. We all know what it's like to sit in a classroom and learn. And when you, when you learn about this type of delivery, it makes a lot of sense to me. And I just want us to really take this opportunity to really think about this and think we want to be even bolder on this and even go there a little more. So, again, I know there's more discussion and a lot of, a lot of smart people are going to talk about it, but I just want to encourage people to be bold on that area and that, in that topic.
Yeah, and I agree. I've been doing a lot of research on that also. I've worked with project-based learning and other programs, and I don't see anybody, you know, and I keep on searching for that, like, who can we see who's doing that? There are pockets of it, and I've had pockets of it in my school districts also, but I would like that, too. We're small enough to do that.
Yeah, our side, and that's one thing I think of when I was reading this book, I'm like, man, we are positioned to do this because we are small, we're well, you know, we're financially sound. Like, we're in a position to do something like this really boldly. But anyway, I just, yeah, I would encourage everybody who's working on this to read that book. It's really, really good. And it just makes you think about it differently. And I just look at these strategic plans as opportunities to kind of like, you know, do something different. Again, maybe we'll decide, we don't want to do something like that. I'm not, I'm not trying to shove it down anybody's throat, but I, but I want folks to kind of like think about all the options before we decide on a way to go there.
And the thing is, that's why I had that up there, that cycle, that things change. I mean, you're not going to just, you know, you just, we might try, we might try, you know, some kind of a team of two classes doing that and look at that.
Right, like a pilot.
Exactly. Or study it and see how we can do it. I mean, I've been looking at some programs that we might be able to bring in, you know, for next year. But it takes time to develop that. But even having that thought of how to, how to, teachers are traditionally standing in front of a class and imparting knowledge. That is changing.
Right.
Kids learn best, and also what they're expected to do, especially once they leave us, is to think critically and problem solve.
Absolutely, because those are the skills that stick with you. Let's face it, we all forget eighty percent of what we learn, right? Not to say that we shouldn't teach it, we should, but, but if you have a program that's designed around the skill set, that's actually what you take with you.
And we do have some teachers doing that, so we should really look at those pockets of teachers that are doing that and make sure that our technology leaders also are involved in that. We need to develop our teachers' leaders.
Bring that professional development to that, yeah.
I have, when you talked about alignment and vertical and horizontal, you talked about, for example, that bringing math across, you know, the transition, let's say, from Cottle up to the middle school and then to the high school. How do you look at that through the lens, I guess, data or next-gen or curriculum? Is it, I always wonder about that because I always felt like the kids sort of had a very different approach, maybe even, let's say, using math as an example. You know, we have this program in VISIONS, and then you get to the middle school, and it's very different. So, what does that look like when you say, you know, sort of that horizontal alignment?
Right. So, right now, what's happening is, from what I understand, from talk, again, you know, how long have I been here in this position? But when I'm, when I'm talking to Mr. Seefol, he said that, and I think this is good, that the fifth grade is talking to the middle school, which is something that Dr. McDonough has set up, is this vertical planning. And I really happen to like in VISIONS. I know people struggled with it, but it really, when you talk about how kids really need to understand what they're doing, in VISIONS is like that. It's not the way that we, we got math.
Right.
If you start learning the way we're teaching math now, that is one of the exciting things that we're doing. You can solve a lot of problems when you understand. And we are looking at the coherence, even with the STEAM program at Cottle, that that moves into, our kids are coming up now, and they will be, with different and better skills. And then we need to make sure that we're ready to receive them in maybe a little bit of a less traditional way than we did. A lot, maybe even, because we are, hopefully, and we're expecting that these kids from Cottle with all of these things that we put in place, even in VISIONS, which was the first year, and I know the first couple of meetings, people were, wow, what's this? But the higher-level in VISIONS that we put in place really will be brought into, and we're talking about doing that over the summer, some professional development to align it into the middle school.
Oh, yeah, okay, great. And then the other question I had, when you mentioned these surveys, so when they had, when they were putting the strategic plan together and they collected all the data, and you mentioned, you know, did people really get to see those results, right? Did people really see an analysis of it or what, you know? I spent, you know, let's say, twenty minutes filling that out and giving all my feedback, but then I didn't see anything. What, would, how would you present that differently then, you know?
Well, I just actually, I've tried to find it, and I did, I do have it, and it was, as I understand, presented to the Strategic Planning Committee to come up with those four areas of where we needed to focus. Though I have to say, these four areas is pretty much like where everybody's focusing. But I, when I went through it, and I just really actually just had somebody find it for me, I think it's interesting and important that we look at that, too. It has valuable information, and it was never shared, I don't know if it was shared in the building. Do you know? No?
The survey results were shared with the core planning team, and every, every comment was read and used to create these four. They were not shared with the community.
Thank you.
And they had all day, like, working groups, they all came in and...
Yeah, two days.
Yeah, two days, right, exactly.
That would be, that's an, I mean, that, I did actually have that thought because I had filled out and I hadn't really, I was curious myself, as someone that wasn't in the inside, you know, wasn't there to sort of hear those details. So, I think that's an interesting, would be an interesting thing to do.
Even for the teachers to see it, because there were, you know, or the administrators, there were questions about, about, you know, how we communicate. Do we think our school communicates well? And I don't think we necessarily, it was two years ago. It'd be two years this summer, right? Was it 2018?
It was the summer of 2018.
Yeah, so it will be this summer, two years ago, but it still has valuable information. These, most of these kids are still in the school, and the parents are still here. There's also, was a survey that we'll be looking at that was, that, you know, was done through Stronger Together. So, we have other information that will also help us in the social and emotional learning. So, we should, we should grab onto all of those things and see where our needs are.
Right. And thank you for the algebra and for, and really to everybody for, I think there's been a lot of, you know, in a year's time, there have been certainly social, emotional, and other areas have been addressed. So, it's exciting that it's, you know, we're getting it going, and now, like you said, drill it down, get more specifics so we can measure it and we can see it and we can actually have a timeline, you know? And so, all those things will make us really stay on point, you know?
Okay, great. Okay, the board just wanted to go over our goals that we had set back in the fall, and we just wanted to have a sort of midpoint in the year, little discussion. And although we're missing two of our board members tonight, we're just going to go through it, and we will catch them up on where we're at. Okay, so, board goals for 2019, 2020. First was our superintendent search. So, we have been reporting on that. The community, I think, at this point is pretty up to date as to where we are. But Laura and Pete, did you want to add anything else? Because I know a few things just came up there.
Sure. Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Yeah. One of the things that we did was we updated the, well, this isn't, this is along the search, but our page in the board of that is, we just updated it. So, if you want to take a look and read and look at that. But in that, it also has the, if you click down, it has a superintendent search page, if anybody doesn't know that already. So, that's there. And the more recent thing is that an email went out today, I believe it went out today to the community. And that's basically a committee for the community to enter into, for a lottery, and we're going to select five people. It'll be a random selection. The Dr. Coles office will, it says it all in the email, but he'll pull those names randomly, and then we'll let them know. Lauren will reach out to them. So, that's the update as far as that goes.
Yeah, and, well, of course, the posting is closed now. I think we'll wait until next board meeting to talk about the final of our applicants. I think some of them might still be, even though it's closed, we had gotten a number from Dr. Coles in the afternoon on Friday, but somebody could have still submitted in the evening. We haven't gotten an update since then. So, rather than say an incorrect number, we'll wait till the business board meeting, and then we'll let you know how many applicants we have. But the posting now is, now is closed.
Right.
Right. And our, and our schedule has been set as far as all the dates we've put aside for interviews and meetings and all of that. So, we're going to be quite busy over the next few weeks. And, yeah, it's exciting. We're moving along, so that's, that's great.
Yeah, it's going good.
As far as curriculum, we just had our presentation tonight. So, basically, it is our priority to support the district's strategic goals, and so that's what these meetings are for, and we expect to continue to be given updates and working on that and supporting whatever is needed to be successful at that. Then we'll move on to our third goal, which is to enhance communication. Laura just noted that we are updating the website, the board page, but as well as, I mean, the whole look of the website from what the framework you had to work in is looking very good, and so we are making progress there. And then, what did we decide, or did we decide anything as far as for next year? Like, did we say we wanted to, are we going to stick with this?
I believe so. At this point, we're, you know, the idea was, do you bring in a third party? We discussed that, and Lauren had worked with BOSI's, and we're just using the platform that we get and just kind of working with that. I think, I think more, more so than the actual look of the website is how do we manage the website? How do we constantly keep it up to?
Content management, yeah.
The content is really, that's where we really have to, as you say, drill down. But that is something that we have to figure out. But that's, that's an ongoing, that's work in progress.
And then, next, we had yearly surveys. So, the yearly survey is something that we had talked about as having at the end of the year.
Yes.
I will say, though, that having done the survey for the superintendent search, we got a lot of really valuable information out of that. And one of the things that, you know, almost coincidentally, but not really coincidentally, was that we did hear from students who wanted to have a more say. And, you know, and then Ms. Goodman, last board meeting, brought students to our meeting and has now formed a committee with students. So, I, you know, I, I really appreciate that things are happening, you know? It's not just like, okay, the students want voice, and we're going to work on that. The students want a voice, and now the students have a voice. So, I think that's great.
So, I still think that's something we should work on. We haven't really done any work on it in terms of establishing a yearly survey. I think you're right. I think the survey we did for the superintendent was excellent feedback, so we got to jump on that. But that survey was still geared towards a superintendent search. I still think there's a benefit in having a generic sort of survey that goes out every single year so that we establish a baseline for those survey results. Because to me, surveys are really only valuable when you collect over a period of time and you start to see trends, to see, because, look, you're always going to have outliers, you're always going to have people with different opinions, but, but when you, over a period of time, implement a change or do something different, and then you see the survey change, it's a good feedback. So, I still think there's value in establishing some sort of end-of-year survey.
End of the year, the goal rate.
Both for the, for the community and both, and one for the... Both for the, for the community, and both, and one for the internal staff.
For the staff.
And have it be the set one we do every year, and kind of start, start collecting that. I, I think there's benefit, there's a value in that.
Right.
So, I still think we should do it.
So, you're saying that staff, students, and community?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, students, I guess, we have to figure that out, because we don't, you know, obviously, we're not gonna have elementary school kids doing surveys. But, but I guess maybe for the high schoolers or something, or middle schoolers, and then...
Middle and high school, yeah, I think, I think it's a great, I, I think that, I don't know about how you guys feel, but maybe doing this, we could do the yearly, but I, it's almost like a pre, I like to see like a pre-post, so it's, to your point, over a period of time. So, at the beginning of the year, not necessarily do a survey twice a year, but year to year, you're looking at the feedback and seeing, okay, we made some changes. They wanted their, they wanted a voice more than not, you know, they want to be involved more. So, it would be interesting to, to see that and study that over at least a year to two. So, I don't know if maybe more than one survey, but maybe that might be jumping in.
Yeah, and the timing of this, and the time, and this is something we could talk about, we haven't really discussed in the question, but the timing of when you do the survey probably is important, right? Because you wanna hit it where people...
You can make changes.
Are overwhelmed with other things, and they're just not gonna do it, you know? Maybe the summer's a good time, because people kind of like, you know, in between, and school's over, and, I don't know. Something we could talk about, and I'm sure there's schools that have done this. Maybe we can go talk to them and, and figure out, like, what's worked for them.
Right.
You might want to use the survey, because I have it, that you use for the strategic plan.
Yeah.
And then you have a baseline from that.
Right, right. And that's where you have one, yeah.
And the exit interviews are also, and I, I think we had started that, or when I, I know Carl had talked about, doing the exit interviews for the seniors that are leaving. That's also a nice feedback to get, and those are, you know, I want more APs, or I want, you know, they do on their way out. It's like, you know, it gives you that much more data, so I think that's a big part of it, too.
Okay, board office hours, we had announced, and we do announce every meeting, that we still are holding our board office hours prior to our regular monthly meetings. We do have appointments for this coming. Our next meeting in February, there is still time, if anyone is interested, and they just have to contact our district clerk, Lauren, and she will schedule the time. And then student recognition and participation at monthly board meetings. Ms. Goodman started that at our last meeting, and it was honestly so impressive. I mean, to hear our students speak, their, their speaking skills are just unbelievable. And really, to hear from them, what's happening in the schools, and the accomplishments of the students, I just think is a great addition to the monthly meetings. Town hall meetings, we did this fall, joined the PTA. PTA hosted a town hall meeting with our administration, and two board members attended, so we thank the PTA for that. And I'm not sure, but I'll have to reach out to Tara, if something's gonna be planned for the spring. You know, it's all, this is all gonna be happening so quickly now, over the next couple of months. But we will reach out to the PTA and see if there are plans for that. Monthly board presentations, reporting on student growth and performance. And this is something that we've been, as a board, really, you know, it's, it's actually even what I just brought up earlier, actually just seeing the work of the students, and showing our community hands-on what the kids are doing. And I think that, that's so impressive, you know? When we had our, our strings program perform, like, to see the performance, and the follow-up emails we've gotten, and the comments we've gotten for that program, and had the community not seen it, they wouldn't know. And so, I think that's just so important. I mean, literally, I had people stopping me in the grocery store to tell me how impressive they thought that was. So, I just think that's, we need more of that. And, because again, that is what it is all about, you know? And so, I think taking time from our monthly meetings to highlight our students is something that we really have to do a much better job at. Next is to establish regular meeting schedule with the TTA and the CSEA. We have been meeting with both the TTA and CSEA, because we are in contract negotiations. They have been ongoing, and we have been meeting quite often. Board liaisons and building, with building-level administrators. We started out the year where we assigned each board member had a, had a, was given an, a, 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 either one of the buildings, or special ed, also athletics, I believe. But just, we, what we decided when we met for our retreat was that we wanted to better define that role, and what it was, to be more specific. We still haven't, you know, cleaned it all up, but we, we want to do it in a manner that everyone is on board with, so that our administrators think, you know, it's helpful to them, it's helpful to the board, and so, we're gonna approach it, we're gonna, you know, in a more...
I think we talked about maybe having those meetings with our respective liaisons, right, either after, or, or at the start of a new marking period, which is actually right now.
Yeah, yeah, we said like four times a year, right?
Yeah. So, and then, and then we'd each have our meetings, then we can report back to each other on how that went, and what feedback we got. So, maybe we should go ahead and get going with that, because we're starting with a new marking period, yeah.
See, how these things just come right up. The year goes fast. Okay, then we're gonna move on to policy review.
Well, before we move on to that, I just wanted to say, one additional thing, this is, everything you just mentioned was in the, in the topic of communication, right? So, one thing that we didn't put on there, but still we did this year unexpectedly, that falls into that very nicely, is the expansion of the committees that Ms. Goodman led us on. So, we, you know, recently established two new committees, which I think falls into the realm of communication and, and dialogue. So, I think that's just worth, worth noting. It wasn't on our original sort of tasks, but I think it still falls into the overall goal of communication.
Right, and that also came from the discussion that we had, I believe it was in the December meeting, when we put a three-minute time on public comments. And what we said was, also from the talks about increasing the size of the board, that the community had brought forward, that this would be a way to hear more from the community, that the community would have more of an opportunity to participate. And really, you know, I think that is just such a great way to work with community members who have something, you know, that they have their own backgrounds, their expertise, their interests to share with us. And we actually put out for the two committees, the wellness and advocacy, and we are working on the facilities committee. I don't believe that that went out yet. So, there will be three committees, correct?
So, I, I will take the opportunity, if I can, to say, in this setting, that, you know, I know that was, you mentioned the December board meetings, and there was a lot of, you know, sort of friction, or if you want to call it, about, about the whole concept of the expanding the board, and, and, and having more communication, and then in response, we did these committees. But in this topic of communication, and we've said it before, but I think it's worth mentioning, it is a two-way street. I mean, communication works both ways. And we, as you could see from all the things that, that you just listed, we are making an effort to communicate. But I will say, we haven't had one office hours this year. Nobody has taken us up on it, not one person. And we...
We will next week.
We, we have one next week for the first, for the first time. We've established these two new committees, and we've only gotten one.
Two, one for each.
One each. So, for those of you that feel more communication is needed, you know, it is a two-way street. And we're trying our best, but we need it to go both ways.
Right, and I, I would just add, thanks, on the committees, on the, on the Board of Ed page, at the bottom, there's a, a box that is, that reads Community Advisor Committees. If you click on that, Lauren and Ms. Goodman worked on putting a list together, and a description, and the composition of that. So, for example, you know, you, you might see, they might see an email that says, you know, wellness, and what is that, and I don't, you know, and, and so, you know, it's commitment, or people, maybe they, they read it, and they, they didn't pay any attention to it. So, just so that people understand, these committees, they're, they're listed out, there's the description. So, for example, the wellness, it, it reads here, it develops, implements, monitors, reviews, revises nutrition, physical activity, regulations, guidelines, practices. It'll also serve as a resource to schools for implementing this policy. And then it lists the policy, which then you can go into Board Docs and read, what is, there's an actual policy that goes with this type of committee. And then it lists who is on this. So, it's parents, students, health teacher, PE teacher, it's the, the AD. So, you can get all the information on our page, which wasn't there before. This is new.
Yeah, it's good.
And so, sometimes people have to hear things. I remember hearing what's like ten times before, you know? Sometimes you just need to say it, and say it, and say it, and to Pete's point, you know, this was, this was a way of saying, okay, I can't commit to being a board member, but I actually am, you know, I do nutrition, or I'm in, I'm a nurse, or I'm a, someone who has a skill set, and I could be part of the conversation about wellness at the school. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I don't think people really understand what committees are. And so, obviously, they can always reach out and ask, but, you know, it's much of a, it's, it's only maybe four times a year, maybe it's six times a year, but they can offer a lot of feedback, and it comes back to us, or it goes to the superintendent. And it's information that is, is, it's put to action, if you want to, if you wanted to, right? I mean, so, they're all listed there. Just, my last thing is, the facilities one, we're gonna send out for, that's listed there, and, and that's an important one. We can talk about as the budget comes up with the field and different things, but I would recommend people to read this attachment, and see if, as these emails come to them, if it's something that they'd want to be interested in. Just, again.
Thank you, and thanks for adding in the committees, because that is a lot of work there that's been done. Okay, next is policy review. We won't, the, the board had put together a list of policies that either, these came to the board over the past year or so as concerns, or issues that did not have policy to refer to. So, but not only are we talking about creating policy, but also revising and updating. Some of this is mandated by the state sometimes, and we get that from Lauren, and that, and those are read at our meetings. But these were some of the policies that the board wanted to work on. Number one was special education non-resident tuition policy. Two was a homework policy. Three was class size policy. Four was tutoring and coaching policy. Five was a policy regarding Cywinor Boulevard's use, closure, and maintenance of. And the last one was a data collection and use reporting policy. So, Cynthia and Laura are cheering our policy, the, right, the...
Yes, they could, yeah, right, the committee to talk about what policy, and then...
Committee to work on policies.
Exactly, the policy for the policy.
Policy committee.
And we have met one.
But we do have a policy to create policy. There is a rule for that. So, we have been looking at that as well. I mean, you just can't go about it. But it's also that, especially, you know, some of the policies that are mentioned here obviously have to be worked on with the administration, the teaching staff. It's not something that the board is going to just adopt without input. And even whatever the first look or draft of has to have work from everybody before we can even get it.
And in public, correct?
In public, absolutely. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Amy, or there were things there that...
There are a couple of these things that I would like to suggest to the board are not policy. And that may be their procedures, they might even be things that we would give to certain people. Specifically, if I may talk about a couple of...
Sure, absolutely.
Special education non-resident tuition policy, that is, I think you're talking about the students who are tuitioned in from other school districts.
Correct.
Okay, so that, I don't believe would be a policy. I understand why the board would be concerned about that, to make sure that we are providing our students a free, appropriate, public education, our, in, our students in the district. But also that it is benefiting us, and that we're not, you know, financially, it has to be somewhat, it has to be a fiscal decision also, for taking students from other districts. So, one of the things that, that I did when I came here, started to look at that when I was special education, interim special education director, and now that Lori Bowers here, and Lee, Lou, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, I asked that they do the research on it, because I wasn't sure. There's a lot of confusion. I even spoke to our attorneys about how we charge other districts tuition for students that we are taking from their district. And there's been a lot of confusion in the last few years. And I wanted to make sure that we spoke to also the State Education Department. We got some good answers, better, better answers than we thought on how to do this. So, we would like some time to work on this, and explain it to the board, but I don't think that that's a policy.
Okay.
I, I actually checked with our attorney. She didn't think that was a policy either.
Amy, just before you move on, so, just so that I'm clear, too, so the, there is, we do have a policy for non-resident tuition, right? We have, it's a very clear, and it's a pretty standard. I've looked at other districts.
Yes.
It's, you know, you're not gonna increase the class size, you're not gonna add its staff. It's, there are criteria for accepting children in. But special ed is a total different, and that's what you're working on.
Yes, and I want to make sure, because I know it's very confusing to the community, yes, I'm not working on that.
Right, I just wanted to make that, so that people understand what you're saying.
When parents pay nothing, because it's part of the student's ID. So, it's not that. But, yeah, but that's why I wanted clearly understand.
Yeah, it clar, it makes it clear.
What you meant to, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's something you want to continue to research and get back to us on.
I will get back to you on that.
But you're thinking right now, it's not, you don't think it should be a policy?
No, but I think we can decide, and we can get back and explain it to you at a board meeting. You know, probably part of the budget process would be a good time to talk about that.
Absolutely. Because we have to estimate what those numbers are, and, and then, the staff, we will need to support those students. So, yes, I think that definitely falls into a budget conversation.
Also, I would say that the Cywinor Boulevard, that is, I also spoke to the attorney, because I saw that you were talking about this tonight. That would be something that you wouldn't want in a policy. You would really want it in procedures.
In a policy, in a procedure.
I wasn't sure what you meant by data collection, use, and reporting policy. There is a state new, I don't know what, what you meant. There is, and Dr. McDonough spoke to me about it today, actually, and I think we spoke about it at the, at the Safety Committee, about that new...
Protecting data, right.
Yeah, yeah, how we protect data, and where our data goes, and I didn't know. That we have to have a policy.
No, I, I think when we discussed this, we were talking about just sort of men, defining what we as a board want to make sure is collected and, and available for, for review. So, I don't know if that's something that, in your experience, you've seen in schools before, or, or no?
I haven't, but I think under the strategic plan, I, first of all, from state ed, we do have to present our data to you. Our data. That is, that's a requirement, and we do do that. I think that it's kind of, I think you should trust your administration to work with you. You know, if we're gonna have a survey, we should present it to you. You know, if we start to promise all these things, we may have, again, it's sort of like that, that plan I showed you, things change, what we're gonna, what we are going to collect is going to change. But I think these are the kind of discussions that we can have when we do presentations on, when we start doing presentations on social, emotional learning, you might say. First of all, we should be able, when we have our plan, that we are giving you some data, and you can say, I want to see this, too, because things continue to change. So, when you make too many po, when you make too many policies, you really hamstring yourself.
Yeah, I understand. So, as of right now, in terms of data collection, obviously, state tests are collected, but, but beyond that, is, is it now just up to the administrator of each, of each building, what they want to collect, or how they want to collect data, or is that something that comes out of your office? How's, how's it done now?
It, it should come out of curriculum instruction and the superintendent's office, of what data we are looking and examining, of how we... We should have our school data, you know, the STAR data, or whatever test we're using, or, and I don't know if we present on that. We should have multiple data sources that we're presenting, and when we make a plan that's tied to data, I believe we'll know which ones we're looking at. So, I, it will be an ongoing discussion as we fine-tune this strategic plan to know how we are measuring it, and what data are we presenting. I always, you know, in my opinion, when you have a strategic plan, and it's in front of you, not just presenting to the board, it's something that you work with all the time. You know, if we're looking at mid-terms, let's say, as one of our data, or we, you know, how we're seeing that our students are succeeding, we want to make sure that we're not just waiting for a state test.
Yeah, we think of the point.
And we want everybody, you know, in this plan, and in the district like ours, we should want, you know, we don't want to just see who is passing a test.
Right.
We want to see high-level achievement. We might not be seeing that across the board with everybody. We want to see the growth. So, I think that there's a lot of ways in the strategic plan to break that down.
Well, you make a good point. So, the strategic plan, if you, if you do, if you, if you do the plan correctly, and I know there's more to be done, and you have, you define how you want to measure it, then that becomes your data collection.
Exactly. And then you have your goals and your students right in front of you. And that's what you're reporting to the board. And it's not just about reporting to the board and the community, it's about working with your teachers, because again, what I was trying to say tonight is, if your goals are in front of you, it's what you do every day. It's what you live and breathe. And you have flexibility, too, but you are, if we want to do, you know, what, if we want to see growth, we have to measure that growth. And then we have to say, wow, that's not working. What are we doing? And somehow, when everybody has that in front of you, you know how it is. When you're working towards something, it's just like what we're teaching our students. We get better and better at it, because we get more focused on it, and so do the kids. And eventually, the kids should be part of that data collection also, if we really look at contemporary teaching and learning. Where are they going? How would they keep, and we look at social, emotional learning, kids are really supposed to be measuring that for themselves. So, we have a lot of work to do altogether, but, right, if we have a strategic plan that is showing us... that is showing us where we're going, we will have the data to look at.
Right, I'm comfortable with that.
Responsible for it.
That makes, that makes sense. And just going back to the Cywinor one, if you don't mind, just, can you just tell us basically what the lawyer said about it? Why they don't think we need a policy? Because I, we kind of thought that the policy for that could be very, very thin, but just where we as a board defining who is sort of in charge of veering from the normal schedule of the street being closed. But the lawyers didn't agree with that.
Because it's so, you know, first of all, it's not, we can talk about that when we have a facilities committee and talk about, you know, and I love even in safety and security, like when the accident happened on Cywinor, the town supervisor, the police, everybody came together like that very next day. I think we need to make plans with people because we have to know about snow removal, and we have to move, remove the ladders and all of that. But again, we have to have procedures and hold people accountable to procedures, but once the board does a policy,
To change it.
Then when you want to change that procedure for whatever reason-
No, no, I understand.
And then we're going to get stuck. Again, is, it is something that can definitely come up either in safety or in the facilities committee, which board members are on. But again, the procedures doesn't, it doesn't look into every single thing that could happen. And we can't always have a board meeting to change it, and then it gets stuck.
So it's really administrative level that you have this procedure in place that's held accountable, that people are held accountable to follow?
Exactly.
Right.
Well, doing great. We just knocked out, knocked off three of our six policies.
I would say that- I would say with the homework policy, again, I think Michelle, or I think you brought this up, yes. Some of them, we might want to have an ad hoc committee made up of administrators and teachers to study this and advise the board on that and look at some other districts' policies. And we could get started on that if you would like us to do that, work with our principals and our assistant superintendent for curriculum on that. And would that be-
That sounds good.
Absolutely.
That sounds appropriate, yeah.
Class size policy, that is, just in my experience, it could be something that could get you into, we have to be very careful how we, number one, study it in a district this size, and number two, how we write it, because when there are problems with, let's say, budget, or if there, you know, one kid could, or two kids could make you have a class of 15, two 15s instead of a class of 30. So we'd have to be careful, I mean, we don't want, we don't really like classes of 30, and when we come to you this budget season, we will show you how we might not like some of them, but we might not always have the flexibility to do it. So again, I think it's something that an ad hoc committee made up of administrators and teachers is a good thing, but when we come to writing the policy, I think we have to be very careful that we don't get stuck in that.
Yeah, I know. One of the things we talked about was the need to, if you do have a policy like that, you have to have sort of a cutoff date of how many projected children you think you're going to have, because, and then if you have one or two after that, you have to stick, still stick to that class size, even if it goes over the policy amount, because you, at some point, you have to cut it off, and we understand that. I think the idea though is that we want to, as a board, sort of set the limit, you know, a hard limit of sort of how large we want our classes to get, because we want the instruction to be, you know, as, as, you know, intimate as possible.
And we have a lot of very small class sizes here, which is what makes Toccoha so great. I mean, there are classes of 10 kids sometimes, you know, in a high school. But we also want to make sure that, it's easier to go lower. It's hard to go higher in some of these, and that's because we're small, it's hard to do that. And we should look at, of course, that's why I think an ad hoc committee helps to really study what class sizes are good for middle school and what's good for high school, and try to stay away from, of course, those very large class sizes if we can. But again, write something in it so that we have some, you know, some flexibility, like you said, like an end date. Because I've seen districts really struggle with that, and they get this extra kid and-
Yeah, so I think, yeah, no, absolutely, and I think the idea of setting a policy is, is that, look, we all know at some point, every school district goes through it, and it's a cycle. We may, five to 10 years from now, find ourselves in a tight position. But having a policy basically says, when it comes down to cutting things, this is something we prioritize, class size. Find someplace else to cut, because this is something we prioritize. So again, we want to make sure it has the flexibility in there. I'm not disagreeing with you on that certainly. It's a little tricky, but I, I like the idea of it though, because it does say at a very high level that this is, this is important to us. But I think having an ad hoc committee-
And I think people move to Toccoha because we have so many small class sizes. We have a great reputation, and we don't want to have classes of 30. Unfortunately, when we come to you for the budget, we will want to cut some of those, because you'll make like one extra section. But sometimes it's very, it could be a really weird number that could make a class very small also. We just need to have flexibility with that.
So you're suggesting an ad hoc committee on that as well?
I say an ad hoc committee, just so, and board members can be on it too, but just so that we can study it a little bit. It doesn't have to be long. You can give us a timeframe of when you want us to come back, and Dr. McDonough and, you know, principals can, can run that. I would like to, you know, be a part of it. But we could look at class size and homework policy. We should have input, especially with homework policy from teachers and do some studying. We could bring in some, some readings on it, some research, so we're not just-
Right.
Homework is probably like the harder one to do. That will take some time. I've seen it be very tricky in schools, and we might want to start just with, you know, one school, you know, to really look at it. High school usually is where people want, start feeling swamped.
Yeah, I mean, the class size is, I've looked at, was researching to see, and most, the only ones that I came across that I found was really was four lines that read, try to keep the class size to a, you know, there was no number there. It was just sort of try to keep the class sizes down, a generic kind of policy. It wasn't anything that you would get locked into, but I do think to Pete's point, just to piggyback on what he said, was that when you look at our school, being a small school, I think that parents have this expectation that if I am here in high school, that's a private, small, intimate school, and yet, you know, I have a ninth grader, he's, there's, you know, 31 in an English class, and with, you know, there's another adult, and so it's, it's not always what a parent would. So I think it's something that should be on the radar, and I'm sure the administrators do come to you and discuss it.
And I think the high school is probably the area where I see that the most, where I see the smallest class sizes and a few of those really in English.
Yeah, it's almost like you have the high-
It's a scheduling, like if there are two sections and they're uneven. You know, so one class might have 27 students, and then the other one has, you know, 16 students because of scheduling. So it's just, it's very complicated.
It's complicated. It's complicated, okay.
Actually, when I spoke to the attorney about that too, because I just saw all the ones you had, she said a lot of, just what you said, like a very generic, but I don't know where that's going to really get us.
I kind of feel like that's just not-
That's the intention, that's the intention anyway, right.
But I do think, and I understand how parents feel in those, and kids too, so that's a large class size for high school class.
It is.
It is.
Okay, so let's just finish this up. Facilities, we had here Capital Project to firm up Cottle Field Plan. We did discuss that at our last meeting. We had our architect here who went over what that next phase is going to look like. And so obviously that is a priority, and we are already working on that. And all of this facilities would also incorporates the facilities committee. Next was to establish a capital improvement reserve fund. Now here, this is a good example of something that comes from, from the committees. This came from the budget advisory committee. Actually, it's been about two years in the making, and so it's great to see that this is going to be something we're going to be moving forward with. I think Lee is going to present in that.
She's already working on that.
So, you know, that's just a good example of how things come out of committee and then get brought up to the board.
Can you explain a little bit more? I'm sure what that means.
The capital reserve fund, we don't have a capital reserve fund, you know, so, you know, I wish Lee was here to explain it much better than I could, but basically, we have our unallocated fund, which we are limited to, can only be 4% of our budget. By law, we can only have that. And then we have reserve funds. We have a reserve fund for our tax certs. We have for, I think, for some of the teachers retirement, and we have, we have reserve funds. Capital Project has to actually, in order to create the fund, has to be approved by the community just to have one. So it will have to be on the ballot on our, on our budget vote, and that is just to be, to get one started. And then Lee will have a better idea, because I don't know what the plan is to allocate money into it. But sometimes when we have excess funds and we are capped at at this 4%, where will we put this money? We could start putting some money into the capital reserve fund. One example, when I was on the budget committee two years ago, that came up in our, in our talks was just, for example, the turf field. Now, we know already that the turf only has a 10-year life, you know, maybe you can get it to 12 years. So if you know that, then why not start saving money now?
Right.
You know, and even if you're not going to get to what it costs, I think to be able to go to the community and say, you know, it's a million dollar project, but we have reserved 500,000, you know, we, we've been working on this. I think then, you know, that shows the community that you knew, and you don't have to ask for a million.
Because certain projects are considered capital improvement. You can't just use fund balance. You can't, you have to get, go out to the community and get the community support for it. So this allows you to do that along the way for things like the turf.
And, you know, let Lee better explain it during the budget, but I also believe that then to go use the money that is in this fund, you also need voter's approval. So it's not like you can just use it on whatever you want. If we go to say, okay, we're going to use this money now for a Cottle Field Improvement, then the community has to say, okay, we're good with that.
But I think they're, you know, when people have been at meetings, they have a number of times brought up that fund being, they want us to do something with it.
Yes, yes.
So I think it's time, and I think it's exciting to, let's go with that, or, yeah, let's move it, yeah.
Okay, and again, Lee will explain it a lot better than that. Okay, request review approve a comprehensive classroom library renovation plan for the 2020-21 budget. Now, this came from last year when we were doing the budget planning, and what we want, the board is looking for, is we want sort of just like a spreadsheet by classroom that tells us where, what improvements have been done in each room. Because as Ellen knows, we're working on furniture, so how many classrooms have new furniture? How many classrooms are in need of furniture? A lot of work has been done at Cottle to date now in the existing classrooms with new ceiling tiles, new floor tiles. But do all the classrooms have? Has every classroom been painted? So we kind of wanted a more comprehensive look, because when we allocate that money, the board was very specific last year that we wanted to be sure that money was spent on the existing classroom space. And it was, it's just the way it was presented, it's just, it was just difficult to follow at some times. So we thought that if we had a comprehensive plan going into the budget this year, that whatever money was going to be allocated for furniture or for improvements within the buildings, that we have a better idea of where it's going and what it looks like. You know, because ideally, we wanted to fix everything, you know. Another way it came up was the air conditioning two years ago, right? How many classrooms had new air conditioning? Which classrooms had the new air conditioning? Those types of things.
It's been a little difficult to kind of nail that down.
Yeah, it was-
I think Lee's got it all. It just hasn't been presented to us in a way that we can kind of really-
Yeah, I think it would just make it easier.
I know, I know when we had the, the company came in that did the audit, they suggested doing an inventory. And that's obviously an insurance thing to say, what, what do we have? And he'd also said that that's something that, you know, they come in, they do that, but I think you could, maybe with the facilities director and, that could be a combination where, once the, the construction is complete, that we do an inventory, right? See what we have, what, yeah, exactly, for insurance purposes, but then also for plan.
I will say, when we, when we did the tour and we talked at the meeting about what the new space looks like, I, you know, I don't think we commented on how great the existing space also looks, you know, all new ceiling tiles.
Lighting, the lighting is nice, yeah.
The lighting makes such a difference. It really looks so good. And that, that's, that is something that we had made a priority. Okay, where are we now? Okay, develop a preliminary plan for possible follow-up capital project upon completion of the existing one. And when Russ was here, architect at the last meeting, we talked about that a little bit. And what, you know, if, if we make an addition to the plan of the Cottle Field, would we incorporate something else? And that all leads to the need for this facilities committee, because it's a much larger conversation and something that needs a lot of input from our community.
Because Russ had given back to us sort of our items that we didn't get done.
The last time.
Yeah, no, I think that's a perfect job for the facilities committee. I think one of the first things that I would be asking if I was on that facilities committee, to me, a good starting point is to get a refresher from Lee about where we are with, with debt that's coming off. Like what, what can we do, what's, what's, what's the limit of what we can do going forward that would be essentially debt neutral?
Yeah, what's the timeline for that?
Because we know we have debt coming off, so, so to me, that's a good starting point, because then when you know how much money, and we can, we can ask for more than that, but of course, our community, I'm sure wants to stay as neutral as possible. So if we, if we, you know, identify a certain sum of money that would, that we can take and we'd be debt neutral, what can we do with that amount of money? And then to me, that's a good starting point, but it's perfectly well-suited for the facilities committee to take on.
Okay, and then last is just our goal of financial management and budget planning, and it is to stay within the imposed New York State tax cap while maintaining high-quality education programs. So we're right, again, on the cusp of our budget discussions, and Lee will be letting us know what the tax cap this year is and where that leaves us and what will need to be done in the planning process to stay within that. And that's it.
Can I ask you to rewind back to policy, because we missed one?
Oh, we didn't?
Teaching and coaching. We didn't talk about that, right?
Right, that's it?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to that, because that was, that was the other policy that we had on our list that we didn't work on yet to talk about. I think you, you may have some thoughts about separating those or something, Miss Coven?
I think that you guys may want to separate those two and look at what other school districts do. You know, there's, you know, implications in, you put policies up and, you know, what the flexibility that people have. But you might want to research some other school districts and see what some, I don't know, I could try to, or actually Lauren could try to look at other policies and what people do. I usually see them as separate if I, when I see them, and see, maybe we could read some others, you know, research what other school districts do.
The one that we had looked at last year was Scarsdale Schools. They had it as one. But you could see even in that how that language could be a little-
Yeah, I, I think, I think they probably did it that way, and the reason why I think we thought it made sense is that the overarching goal is the same, which is to sort of define what is an appropriate relationship between coaches and teachers and then doing things outside of the school.
For compensation.
But they are two separate areas, so even though maybe the underlying theme is the same, you may, I can see why maybe it's better to separate them. I do think this is an area that we should be, we should be looking at. I know on the teaching side of things, you know, there's, there's sort of a best, there's a practice that we've been following in terms of, you know, teachers can't tutor their own, their own children, but I think it's, it's a serious enough thing that it should be put into policy.
It's a good thing to put into policy. I do believe that's what we follow here is that teachers can't.
And on the coaching end, I know we have several, a couple of our coaching staff that also do private rec-type stuff. And not to say that it's a bad thing, but I do think it's an area of some concern by some people. It's an area of concern for me. I'm open-minded about it, but I think the discussion needs to, needs to happen. I think we as a community need to know, need to come up with a consensus of what we're comfortable with. I mean, you know, we want to make sure we're keeping as much opportunity for our student athletes as possible and that we're not, you know, depriving them of good coaching. But we also want to make sure that everything's, you know, everything that we do within the school seems like it's fair and is not a perception that certain, you know, kids have gone through certain programs, they're going to be favored.
It's about, you know, creating an equal opportunity.
Right, absolutely, and, and yeah, so I, I think that's an area that does need some exploring. Maybe we'll talk about it and decide nothing needs to change, but I think the discussion needs to happen, and I think we need to have, have some dialogue about that and ultimately maybe do it.
And that is the, the whole reason why when policies are adopted or modified, there are three readings of it. Because even if the board were to come up with some language that we were in favor of moving forward with, within those conversations over those meetings, you know, with the community input, that could change. And that's, that's why it's, it's set up that way and should be that way.
And what, what kind of, so we talked about homework and then ad hoc for that or committees. So the committees then make recommendations and then we talk about it in public.
So if you, we could put, I worked with Dr. McDonough on those other two committees, and I would say- And I would say of them, they will take some time. Probably won't be able to come back. How long do you think something like that would take?
Depends on how much you want, so a couple of months.
Yeah, we need to give that some time to meet and find people to meet on that.
But for the tutoring and coaching, what would that look like for the policy?
I think that that would be a board, I mean, I think it would be easier if the board made those decisions. Because I think for teachers, a lot of people might have different thoughts about that.
The teaching one is probably the easier one, quite frankly. Because it's just basically putting our best practice into writing, which we've already been doing. The coaching one to me is a little more trickier.
We could even ask our attorney to give us something for the teaching one. And maybe you would like to do a first reading if Lauren can get some kind of.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I think, you know, maybe, or maybe, Pete, it would be under, you know, code of conduct or conflict of interest or ethics or, you know, in other words, there's a guideline. And I don't know, you know, where it would fall. We'd have to discuss how we want, where that would fit. I mean, I know Scarsdale has it specifically, it says tutoring, I think it says tutoring and coaching policy. So it could look like that. But it could, could also be in, I've looked at other districts that have it under conflict of interest, where it reads, you know, it can be as specific as saying, you know, there's a conflict if you are receiving payment at the same time that you're running the, and selecting players, for example. Could be that specific to, you know, a generic sort of code of ethics or conflict of interest. Or, you know, something where you wouldn't, even if it's a perception, right? So it may not be, but parents or students perceive that. So there's, there's almost like a code of conduct, if you will, I guess.
So maybe a good place, I would think a logical place to get input though, and I do agree with Ms. Givens that we, this one probably should be a board, at least initiated discussion. But I think it would make sense to get input from our athletic department. So if Mr. Tobin wants to kind of weigh in, maybe have him in one day and give us his sort of feedback on it, where, where he would think it should go. Take that feedback, come up with some, some options.
Maybe he could be involved in that discussion, especially because he lives in that world.
Right, right, right.
And he was a coach.
Yeah. And then ultimately come up with what we think is the best way forward and then put that forward to the community and get the dialogue with the community going. You know, with the, with the readings and so forth. But I think Mr. Tobin or the athletic department would be, would be a good place to start for their input on this.
Right, right. Okay, so he can come to a work session.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we will be back next week, February 10th, for our monthly regular scheduled meeting at 7:30 PM, Monday, February 10th. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.